All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, March 24 regular meeting of Kimberley City Council to order, held here on the homelands of the peoples. Welcome tonight, not just to council, but to staff that are here in the gallery, to folks watching in on our YouTube channel, and also to MP Scott McInnes, who is with us tonight. We'll get to Scott momentarily. What did I say? Oh. Hey. Yo, Morrison will kill me. MLA Scott McInnes, whom we will get to in a moment. Do we have any late items?
There's no late item, Mr. Van.
All right, hearing none. Can I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Counselor Cairns, thank you, and Counselor Maguire, seconds. All those in favor. That motion is carried. Next up, we have adoption of the minutes of the special meeting of council held on March 3. Mover, please. Counselor Roberts, thank you. Counselor Dunneback, seconds. All those in favor. Opposed, that motion is carried. All right, as I mentioned a moment ago, we have our MLA Scott McInnes here this evening. Welcome, Scott. The podium is yours. We appreciate you being here.
Thanks so very much. A pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor McCormick and councillors. Thank you for all your hard work for the community of Kimberley, being colleagues as elected officials. I do have a ton of respect for what you're doing for our community here, so thank you so much. And I look forward to working with you on projects in the near future, so I look forward to that collaboration. I'm going to highlight a couple of things that we're working on locally here in the Kimberley region, followed by a couple of things about my critic role, which people may be interested in. Then I'd like to read you pieces of a letter which I've sent out to local governments today, just to get you caught up to speed on some things that are happening. So, as you may have heard, healthcare workers locally here do not receive the provincial retention incentive. So, you know, quickly as an overview, it's up to $8,000 a year for everybody from nurses, people in the hospital, employees' union, facility staff. The idea is to attract them here and to retain them in rural and remote communities. Communities that receive the PRI, Trail, Soyuz, Merritt, Okanagan Falls, Fernie, and Invermere. Kimberley and Cranbrook are excluded. Now, I've brought this up in question period. I've had some backroom conversations with the minister, and I can't really get an answer as to what the rubric is around why, whether it's proximity to a major health center such as Kelowna or Vancouver, or the size of our communities, why Kimberley specifically and Cranbrook, those working at the East Cooney Regional Hospital are not getting this. There are several drawbacks to staff not receiving the PRI here. One is that agency nurses, so traveling nurses, are taking up a lot of space at the East Cooney Regional Hospital. And although that's not a bad thing that we have people employed in the healthcare field, they're very expensive, okay? Also, they're not necessarily experts in their field. I received a letter from a constituent who had a negative experience with her child, who had RSV, and the traveling nurse didn't really know how to use some of the tools and things to deal with their young child. So, you know, there are challenges beyond being able to retain and attract healthcare workers here, and that's on the ground. So, I'm going to be meeting with Minister Osborne officially once we get back to Victoria in the next couple of weeks, just to get some answers. I've been working really closely with Denise Nelson, who's our East Cooney rep for the BC Nurses Union on this file. And I've actually been, you know, pushing this forward since I started campaigning over a year ago. So, I really, really hope that we can get some answers and push this forward. The government's kind of in a hold and evaluate period right now. But, you know, the urgency is there to provide our healthcare workers with the additional pay, which I think they deserve. I know council and Mayor McCormick, you know this issue well. It was brought here not long ago, I believe, actually, at the last meeting with the short-term rental registry, excuse me. There's a bit of a redundancy that the province is charging on top of municipal or regional district fees. And the result of that is people are pulling their listings. And this will be devastating for the local tourism economy, who, you know, in a place like Kimberley, we just don't have the accommodation space. We rely on short-term rentals for visitors that are coming here to enjoy our wonderful scenery and outdoor experiences. I feel like what the city has done has addressed this issue already by collecting information. You know, we have people in a registry so they follow bylaws, et cetera. I see this as kind of a double dip on the province's part. There's absolutely no return for short-term rental operators out of this. So, I'm going to be meeting with Mr. Kalon the week after next, just to ask him why resort municipalities are not exempt from the short-term rental registry, because it's also an issue across the riding. Wildlife and chronic wasting disease. When the budget came out a couple of weeks ago, flipping through it, I didn't see the provincial budget, excuse me, I didn't see any additional funding for invasive species, chronic wasting disease, specifically around the testing protocol. As you know, we also have whirling disease, which is, you know, really popping up on everybody's radar. It's in Cooney Lake now. This would be devastating to the trout species that are native to the area. It's a parasite that gets into their skin, and they end up swimming in circles and they die. And it's really devastating, especially for young fish. I'm a big believer in, you know, getting it ahead of some of these things, because once, as you know, with invasive species, if the horse is out of the barn, it's really hard to put it back in. What we've seen is a bit of a cutback in some of the clean drain and dry programs that the province is providing for folks coming to visit from Alberta. Along with that, invasive mussels. I've had several meetings with Living Lakes Canada. It's not detected in the Columbia Basin yet, but it could be. And that would be absolutely devastating to our waterways. So, I'm just kind of, you know, keeping tabs on what the Ministry of Water, Land and Resource stewardship is up to as far as, you know, possibly, you know, reinstating some of these clean drain and dry programs that they've cut back on, just ensuring that, again, you know, this is a serious issue for rural BC and our area specifically, and hoping that they reconsider some of their priorities. Recently, there was an urban deer targeted removal. I was in full support of the province doing this. Unfortunately, we didn't quite get the numbers here in Kimberley that we needed. It was really important, I feel, to get those tests out of Kimberley for chronic wasting disease, to see what the numbers are. Not only that, but I'd love to work with council and Mayor McCormick in the future to develop some sort of an active urban deer strategy. I've been saying it for years that it's only a matter of time as we head to fawning season here, that somebody is gravely injured or killed by a mother deer, and the reaction will be reactionary, as it always is. So, I'm hoping that there's a proactive approach here to look at how we can control the urban deer numbers here in Kimberley. The resort municipality initiative. The previous Thursday before we left Victoria, I was in what's called budget estimates, asking the Minister of Tourism, Arts and Culture and Sport about what is the framework around the resort municipality initiative? How much money are resort municipalities getting out of the deal? And he was, you know, with all due respect, he seemed a little bit disorganized. He couldn't tell me how much tourism revenue was coming in from the 14 resort municipalities. And I just want to see, you know, what kind of the return on investment is, because I feel like the government uses resort municipalities a little bit like an ATM machine. And I don't feel like it's the return to the RMs is fair. So, just seeking some clarity around what that structure looks like. In addition to that, just seeking some clarification around what constitutes things like tourism infrastructure, right? I know, you know, for places like Kimberley and beyond, we could use some additional pieces in our towns to support tourism, but the tourism infrastructure under the RMI seems to be a little bit restrictive. So, I just want to see what that looks like moving forward. As far as, I wanted to come and talk about housing a little bit generally, but I feel like the goalposts are kind of rapidly changing from the Ministry of Housing. I just, I can't really put my finger on what direction they're heading. They've walked back on a couple of policies that they had previous to the election, such as the secondary suite policy. So, I'm just, I don't have a lot to report yet, because I just don't know what direction they're taking. So, I hope when I come back, I'll have a little more meat on the bone for you there. Let's check my time here. I want to work together with Kimberley to ensure that we have some resiliency strategies for what could potentially be a loss of American tourist dollars. According to Cooney Rocky's Tourism, about 10% of our tourism comes to the United States, amounting to about $100 million. So, I just feel like, you know, with some of the things that are happening with the trade dispute, et cetera, it'd be nice to look at ways to, you know, not only with the city, but with tourism in Kimberley, to attract some new visitors that we haven't had before. Unfortunately, again, in budget estimates, the minister didn't really seem to think it was a problem, and we're welcoming to Americans, but I just don't see that reality taking place in the future with just sort of the negative rhetoric and thing that's being thrown back and forth. Americans spend big money on certain industries, the Kelly skiing and guide outfitter operations, and it's really important that if we're not having American tourists, that we look at how we can supplement that. Some things that I look forward to working with you on in the future, these are already pieces you're all well aware of, that, you know, I'm just kind of waiting on the sideline for any assistance that I can be of. Your watershed fire resiliency program, obviously the Kimberley clinic, the water treatment facility. I'm just waiting if there's any way I can be helpful to mayor and council. My phone is always on. I've really appreciated my critic role for Indigenous relations and reconciliation. It's been quite amazing to meet some fantastic Indigenous leaders around the province. Simon John from the Ahadasthat First Nation, Willie Sellers from Williams Lake, which is the home of the sugarcane film, which was nominated for an Oscar. The Niscah LNG Leadership Group, Don Tom of the Union of BC Indian Chiefs, George Lamprou from Sip First Nation, and many, many more. Really enjoyed that. It's been a really tremendous honor to make those connections. And I look forward this summer to traveling around the province and meeting even more folks. How's my time, Mayor McCormick?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, I better make it quick. Before I take your questions, I just wanted to share a little bit of a letter that I've sent to local government, to local First Nations leaders around what's called Bill 7, the Economic Stabilization Tariff Response Act of 2025. This was given first reading on Monday, excuse me, on Thursday, March 13, immediately before the legislature was recessed for a two-week break. As your elected member of the Legislative Assembly, I have several major concerns with Bill 7 and the authority it would grant to the provincial government, including the authority to make executive decisions without legislative oversight, no debate, no votes on passage of new legislation and regulations, the authority to amend existing legislation or regulation without legislative due process, the authority to make executive decisions based on anticipated tariff threats, the collection and disclosure of personal information, the ability to impose rule tolls and fines on anyone without consultation. And this is a two-year executive authority until the sunset clause in the spring of 2027. Just going to skip ahead a little bit here, because I know my time's limited. The premier has made it clear that if this bill is not supported unanimously by his NDP caucus, he will call an election. The strong-armed approach leaves his MLAs, especially those that won their seat by a slim margin, in a very precarious position. I've been in contact with several members of his caucus, and they do not support this bill. As your MLA, it would ultimately silence me as your voice on local matters related to new and existing legislation and regulations. I sincerely hope that you share this principle behind the overreach of this proposed bill with me. We have no other province that has introduced this type of bill in Canada in response to the tariffs. And I'm just asking for letters of support from municipal and local governments. So, with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Right on time. Thanks for that, Scott.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a lot of boxes checked as we're going down the list here. You're the busy guy out of the gate. Counsel. Counselor McBain, go right ahead.
All right. Really, more than anything, Scott, it's great to have our MLA here. I was kind of reflecting with you there a couple of minutes before things started. And, you know, we had a few MLA visits, you know, my first six years in council, but it was pretty sparse. And to see you come here at the beginning of your term is awesome. So, really, really appreciate that. I love the fact that you're taking on issues that are affecting our riding swiftly. You're heading all the right marks, I think, when it comes to the concerns that we have locally. And so, I'm really supportive of that, and I would say, keep it up. With respect to the letter of support, I think for myself, I would, I need to, I like the fact that you said in principle, because I think having that due process is very important, trying to navigate this mercurial behavior, I guess I would call it, coming out of the States. But I think for myself, I would like to understand that a little bit better. But I will say that, you know, as somebody who spent a lot of time down there, my only thing is I just, I'm very cautious about softening. I think we're dealing with another group right now that is looking for us to backpedal a little bit. And I'm not really, I'm not really keen on that. I'm not. By the way, I've dealt with bullies my whole entire life, is I punch back. And, but hey, that's just feedback from my perspective. But again, Scott, really appreciate you being here. I think this is awesome. And I think it's great that, like I said, you're taking these local issues on and looking out for the people that you represent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McBain. Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Scott, the last item that you brought to the floor with regard to your letter. I'm wholly in support of your position on that. Giving executive decision away of just about absolutely anything by the sounds of it sounds exactly like what is happening in the United States already. And I just don't want to see that happen to us. I think we need to kind of keep our nose clean, keep our nose to the ground, and make sure that everybody knows what they're doing and has a say in it and comes at it from the majority, and not by an executive decision. So, that'd be my point of view.
Can I just quickly respond to that, Mayor McCormick?
Yeah, please.
And I jumped around on my letter, but, you know, as an opposition member, you know, our desire is to work with government on solutions to the tariff issue. As Counselor McBain pointed out, you know, we don't want to soften. It's about 41 MLAs not getting a vote or a voice on these bills. But absolutely, I mean, creative solutions to the issue. I mean, we brought forward a bill about taking down the interprovincial trade barriers. You know, some of these things that we really feel like are going to be proactive solutions to the Trump tariff threats is what we are elected to do.
Further, Counselor Dunneback, go ahead.
I just want to say I appreciate and respect the role that you've taken on. It's awesome. And in a nutshell, I want to say, like you hit the nail on the head probably about 10 times in your speech there. Just with the direction and the thoughts, I like it, and you have my support.
Thank you, Counselor Dunneback. Further. One comment before I let you go. The RMI money is roughly $15 million a year that's put in, and it's paid back to the provincial coffers in less than 15, before the January, the 15th of January. So, that's how small that money is in comparison to what the 14 resort municipalities bring in.
It's a small percentage.
It is. Tiny. Okay, thanks, Scott. I appreciate you being here, and I look forward to you coming back for another update soon.
You know I will. Yep, look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the zoning amendment bylaw 2780, which is the future drive-through and gas stations bylaw amendments. And we have basically two motions on the floor. First is that council provide first reading of this bylaw. And secondly, that council direct staff to refer the bylaw to the Accessibility Advisory Committee, pardon me, for review and feedback prior to second reading. Did I have a mover? Counselor Maguire, thank you. And second, or Counselor McBain? Go ahead, Counselor Fox.
So, I've been informed that there are concerns that I have a conflict of interest on this matter, because I own a restaurant in town, so I'm going to go hang out in the hallway.
Thanks, Counselor Fox. Ownership of a restaurant? Yeah, I know. So, okay. You had recused yourself last time. So, yeah, I think the, I guess the rules surrounding conflicts are, anybody who feels there is a perceived conflict needs to declare that. Nobody declares it for them. So, you know, at the end of the day, there's no debate around whether that is right or not. If there is a perceived conflict, it's always better to err on the side of caution. So, I guess that's what we have, what we have going on here. Yeah. Thanks, Jason. Thank you. All right, the motions are on the floor. Counsel, comments or questions for staff? Go ahead, Counselor Maguire.
Yeah, I don't have any conflicts, so I'm going to speak to this. At least I don't know that I do yet. I'll try to keep this brief. Our community has spoken on this issue. We received over 100 letters from residents and local businesses, which have told us loud and clear they want a city that values walkability, sustainability, and vibrant local business. People want a place where families can stroll downtown, where local entrepreneurs and nerds thrive, and where the community's character grows stronger with every new development. And we have a choice before us. Do we open the door to low-density car-oriented development, the prioritized drive-throughs and US corporate chains? Or do we double down on a building, a community, where small businesses, local makers, and Canadian-owned enterprises create lasting roots? This is about more than zoning. It's about shaping the kind of city we want to leave for our children. Studies show that dense, walkable downtown towns generate more long-term tax revenue and that they require less costly infrastructure. But beyond the numbers, these spaces create connection, vibrancy, and a true sense of place. We also need to protect what makes our economy resilient. Our industrial lands should be hubs for manufacturing, trades, and for value-added businesses that strengthen our community. If lots are sitting empty, we should ask why and address those barriers rather than filling them with low-density commercial developments that don't contribute to long-term growth. We have an opportunity here to refocus. Regardless of how this bylaw proceeds, we need to direct our energy towards supporting vibrant business development. We need to support BC-owned businesses. We need to encourage high-density, small-scale industrial use on vacant industrial lots. We need to adjust zoning to welcome new commercial spaces that strengthen our core. And we need to invest in amenities that make our city a great place to do business. Our path forward is clear by staying focused on our values, community connection, and local resilience. Let's live up to these, let's live up to being the best town in BC.
Thanks, Counselor Maguire. Pardon me. Further? Counselor McBain, go ahead.
Well, it's unfortunate that the, first of all, I don't recall the recusal of Kevin before, so that is confusing me. But regardless, it's unfortunate that the direction to have the Accessibility Committee look at this is after this vote. It's just a commentary. I struggle with this one in the sense that I still stand by, I do not like full-on prohibitive measures. I don't know what's going to come down the pipe tomorrow. There's maybe some wonderful idea that none of us at the Roundus Table have thought about that could provide some service to somebody that, you know, would have some benefit that we're just not seeing right now. And by putting something prohibitive on, I think just, it lessens our ability to accommodate. The other thing, too, I think that I'm struggling with is I agree with Counselor Maguire's characterization of trying to make Kimberley as walkable of a place as we can. And I think we've got, our downtown core is set up quite well for that. But at the same time, we do have, we're stretched between the upper part of Townsite and the southern end of Marysville that are eight kilometers apart. Walkability becomes much more challenging. And I think it's a, can sometimes be a bit of an unrealistic expectation that we can create the same type of environment evenly distributed about throughout the city. So, those are my concerns. Again, I don't, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that have been pointed out about drive-throughs and other things that are valid. But at the same time, I just, I can't cancel support something that's 100% prohibitive. I think there's always, having an option to review is very valuable. And I would like to have the Accessibility Committee weigh in on things, because they provide a different perspective that I can't myself provide.
Thanks for the comments, Counselor McBain. So, just for clarification, Counselor Dunneback had recused on the basis that he had a C3. His property was zoned C3. That's why you left the room last time. Go ahead, Counselor McCarrons. Counselor Cairns, thank you.
Thanks. So, I, first of all, corporate chains, McDonald's, Tim Hortons, and other US corporate chains are welcome to set up in our commercial zone as it is. There's nothing in the way of that. McDonald's could open in Marysville Commercial or any number of locations, including the Plazelle at this point. So, this bylaw does not interfere. We all want economic development. And the difference is that those of us who voted to not create zoning specifically for drive-throughs want economic development that brings long-term benefit here locally. Drive-throughs have inherent issues. Under this bylaw, a drive-through proposal would go through a public hearing and vote by council, because it would involve a zoning amendment. So, the issues to look at with drive-through, there's many, but I'll only touch on a couple. They interfere with traffic flow and safety. Just, you know, picture the entrance to Marysville as a highway commercial strip with streetlights, but not in the location that would improve safety for the school and the daycare. And what that looks like during rush hour. Second, land use. The majority of the land becomes unimprovable, because it requires a lot of land to maneuver and park vehicles and go through a drive-through window sitting in your vehicle. Kimberley has a shortage of developable, serviceable land and needs to, serviced land, and needs to optimize our tax revenue from that land. Commercial development with big, empty spaces for vehicles lining up and then go through a window and get back on the highway really restricts that. Thirdly, we need to diversify our tax base. Land is needed for a mix of light industrial, manufacturing, housing, and commercial. Uncontaminated service lands are rare. And we need to expand beyond our restaurant, gas station service sector for living wage jobs and for long-term economic development. And then fourth, it's the air quality, walkability, and accessibility issue. Finally. Terms of drive-throughs, um, the large corporate chains tend to favor that model. Um, and tied in with gas stations. And it's been shown that these large corporate chains that, that come into these places generally in the long term leave a community poorer because they pay low wages and they force the wages down of existing local business that's forced to compete with them. Uh, they tend to import supplies from outside the local area, so we both, they don't support local grocers or producers. And then we export local profit to shareholders at, at headquarters. Uh, they are an outdated, extractive model that, especially now, is incredibly important to divest from. And we don't have the ability to control whether they come in to our community, but in the case of drive-throughs, we actually have the ability through this policy to review on a case-by-case basis. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Counsel Carrance. Um, so I do have a couple of, a couple of comments as well. Um, none, conversations surrounding development of any kind, I, I don't think we've had a development, including a carriage house in the last five years that hasn't had debate around it. Um, development of all kinds is going to be under scrutiny, as it should be. Uh, and, um, we need to take a look at, or at least understand that nothing is black and white. Uh, it'd be nice to be able to say it was. Uh, it's a yes or a no, but there's a lot of gray area that we have to deal with. There are also, on balance, um. You know, I, I, well, let me, let me start out with the, uh, kind of the development and investment realities that we're dealing with. The, uh, the focus that we need to take with respect to diversification of our tax base, which is a goal that council has set for, um, at least three terms now. Uh, probably four terms as I think back, as I think back on it, um, needs to revolve around, uh, the realities of investment. Um, I took a, uh, I took a uh, a look at ten of the municipalities in the East and West, Kootenays, Trail, Castle Guard, Revelstoke, Golden, Cranbrook, Nelson, Ferny, Invermere, Kimberly, and Rosslyn. And took a look at the percentage of taxes that came in by the various tax classes. And the light industrial class, um, of all of those, the largest percentage of taxes, um, of taxes gathered was from Cranbrook. And light industry represented 1.2% of their total tax base. Uh, the percentages were typically, um, the only percentage, the, the percentages were typically under 1%. Now, in and of itself, in a single municipality, you look at that and say, well, they're not doing a very good job of attraction or looking at what the opportunities are. But when every single municipality is less than 1%, I think we need to be uh, cognizant of the fact that there aren't that many opportunities out there, no matter what we attempt to do from an attraction point of view. Um. The municipalities that had the lowest reliance on residential taxes were those that had major industry, either, uh, either mills, uh, or, uh, or mines. Everybody else was focused around reliance on residential and secondarily around, around commercial. And of those, um, commercial contributions, uh, the only one that was lower than Kimberly, Kimberly's at 12%, as you know, 11. whatever percent. The only one that was lower than us was Rosslyn at 9%. And Rosslyn is a bedroom community basically of Trail. And, um, it's only six kilometers up the mountain from, uh, from Trail. So literally it is, you know, a burb of Trail. That's not the case with us, even though we are close enough to Cranbrook to be able to share lots of services. But, um, I certainly don't look at Kimberly wanting to evolve into a bedroom community of Cranbrook. That's just, that's just not where, um, I believe that our residents want, uh, to be. Um. With respect to the focus on commercial, um, it's just a reminder that commercial, the commercial tax rate is 2.5 times that of either the residential rate or the light industry rate. And the speed with which we can diversify and add to that tax base commercial is the, uh, is the way we're gonna get there the quickest. And when I say get there, it's taking as much reliance on the residential tax base as it is. The second point I want to talk to, um, is reinforcing really what Counsel McBain had said. And that is that bans drive investors away. Nobody is gonna come to the community with a particular investment, whether it's a drive-through or anything else for that matter, and look at our bylaws and say, oh, they banned that? And say, well, I'm going to, uh, put an application in anyway and put myself at the mercy of council uh, for doing that. It just doesn't work that way. Bans drive investment away, uh, from the community. And, um, interestingly enough, council agreed with that. Can't remember the date. It was last fall, I think, when, uh, we first provided direction to council to come back with regulation as opposed to ban. We, we basically agreed that bans were not in the best interest of the community. So between now and then, something has changed, but not the fact that bans, uh, are good or that they don't drive investment away. Um, I mean, I, I'm not going to repeat, uh, anything that I have said before, but, um, uh, we just don't get an opportunity to dictate what that should be. We need to be flexible and evaluate each of, each of these things on its own merit. There's nothing that says that a drive-through has to be a fast-service restaurant. There are many, many other opportunities there. And many of which, as Counsel McBain said, we probably haven't even thought of yet. That flexibility is really, really important. Kind of as an adjunct to this, um. You know, I think, I think one of the pieces of work that we need to direct staff to do is to provide us an inventory, a lands inventory of both industrial and commercial, and take a look at what we need in order to satisfy investment, uh, also to get a feel for what inquiries are actually coming to the community. What, what, you know, who's coming and what are they looking for? And kind of how is that gonna play itself out? I think we need that kind of information as a council to be able to intelligently have a conversation about what we do or don't need. Um, I really have a problem with looking at things on a, an emotional basis, uh, because I don't think the psyche of, uh, of Kimberly is that fragile. I don't think if we did have a drive-through, uh, restaurant here, that it's going to impact the view that either the residents or non-residents have of the community. I think we're grossly overstating, uh, overstating that fact. We, uh, we just, our psyche is just not that fragile. In any event, that's pretty much everything. I've, I've tried not to repeat anything that we've said, the plethora of other times that this has come before council. Um, we need to, uh, we need to kind of move, move forward. So with that, um, I'm going to, uh, Counsel Carrance, you have something further?
I do. I, you know, I've heard, um, since we came on to council about how, you know, a vote can go one way or the other, and then we move forward. And that's not happening in this case. And so I just, you know, I just want to comment that, um. Yeah, when a vote has gone one way, um, that we move forward rather than constantly taking a step backwards. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the comment. Okay, uh, so what's on the floor here right now is a, uh, is a motion to provide first reading and, uh, refer this to the, uh, access, the accessory, Accessibility Advisory Committee.
It's like right now that they will.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. It is, it is two separate motions. Go ahead, Counsel McBain.
This is the problem that I, so if the first one doesn't pass, then the second one is moot, correct?
Um, or another option is to, uh, is to defer, um, the, uh, the first motion. Um. And, uh, and refer this to the Accessibility Committee, Committee, it comes back and then we, and then we, uh, we address the first. We can do that either way. Go ahead, Maurice.
You, you can't really refer a bylaw that hasn't received first reading. Like, the first reading is actually like to, to move the bylaw forward. And if you refer to the Accessibility Committee first, like, they, they have no bylaw look at. So it doesn't make sense from a, a step.
Okay, okay.
Perspective.
Yep. Okay, fair enough. So, uh, uh, so we'll call the question on the first, which is that council provide first reading on, uh, on this particular bylaw. Call the question on that. All those in favor? Those opposed? Pardon me, uh, that motion is defeated. Um, so, uh, I, I. What's that?
I just need to break down.
Okay, go ahead. Um, I think this, um. Yeah, okay, never mind. So we can, uh, we can deal with the, uh, the feedback from the Accessibility Committee as part of a further direction to staff. Um, I think if we go back to, I'm sorry, what was the date, uh, Maurice? Where, um, we had, uh, tasked staff with going away and coming back with regulatory? Can't remember the exact date. It was last fall?
That was last July, special meeting.
Was it last July?
Yeah.
So we had ta, uh, tasked, uh, staff with going, uh, back and coming back with a framework for regulatory. Um. Go ahead. I'll finish after you've made the comment.
Um, I'm just wondering whether there's any merit in even going to bylaw and making changes on this. If, uh, if the desire is for us to take these on a one-by-one basis, that's exactly what's gonna happen if we don't amend the bylaw. Um, and if that's seems to be the desire of the council. Um, you know, I, I'm just cognizant that there's two counselors not in the room right now. And, um, and this decision should really include the larger council. And I don't want to start directing staff um, to draft up new bylaws.
So, fair enough, Counsel Maguire. I think if we go back to what staff had come back with, uh, as the amendments uh, to the C3 zoning, um, it actually positions this in a much better space for us to be able to look at these on a, on a, uh, a, a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd like to move to defer this conversation indefinitely because, again, I don't, I don't see that as a solution. It's really just, um, you know, we've never discussed that at the council table, the merit of that specific motion. But, um, but my, my feeling is that the status quo and bringing these back one, one by one is a better option than, um, allowing drive-throughs in all C3 zones. But that's just.
That's fair enough. I think that's where we have been, um. You know, like it or not. Go ahead, Counsel Carrance.
I think, you know, that's a, a fair middle ground considering what we've been through for the last, you know, two years.
Um, it's been a while.
Yeah, it has. And we're, we're just going around in circles on this. And at least that doesn't greenlight it. It, it provides the, um, opportunity to go through that case-by-case, um, review. And with the community as well, considering how much interest the community has shown in this. So I would, I would second that motion.
Yeah, that was a motion, but, uh. Go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, so that, that's really where we're at right now with, with this, this bylaw being defeated. We're back to, if anybody wants to come forward with an application for a, a drive-through or a service station, they're coming forward with a, uh, zoning bylaw amendment essentially. So that, that's where we're at. Every, every application is gonna come forward, um, and initiate that process. So that, that's where we're at now. And unless there's future direction that's received from this or another council, that's the way it'll stay.
Go ahead.
Last comment. I mean, as has been mentioned several times, this has been a long, you know, like we've been, this has been at the table for a long time. And I'm just worried that if we bring this back, we're gonna be here again in three months and have the news covering us and the whole works. I, I just feel like.
Probably have unanimous support on that one.
Let's let this go.
Okay, yeah, so.
And let's refo, yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, exactly. And let's, you know, if efforts are, maybe we can refocus and come together on something that we have broad support for, for helping change bylaws. You know, I, I'm thinking C1 zoning around like expanding core zones and increasing commercial, future commercial development, something like that, where we can kind of all be working together. That's just my, my sense.
Fair enough. In the comments I made about data, you know, and supplying us with information that we need, I think is an important part of this, too. And if we don't have that, we're kind of in a vacuum and guessing. Go ahead, Counsel Roberts.
On that topic, may I ask, ask Jim a question? Is it possible to change the zoning of something, just something to commercial without having an application from someone to put something there? Like, could we just all of a sudden say this piece of property is gonna be zoned commercial, whether there's a buyer or a developer or not?
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, so I mean, there, there could be a, a zoning bylaw amendment that's initiated by council or brought forward for consideration by staff to council, but it's still, we have to go through that, that same process. Um, uh, the legislative process to make the changes to the bylaw, so.
Doesn't take somebody.
It does, it doesn't need to be triggered by a, an application.
Yeah, theoretically, that's the way it's, works when you need a zoning change is the, you know, before the, before a developer comes in either with an idea, um, and many do have at least an idea, but if they know they're gonna need a change in zoning, the idea is to change the zone independent of whatever, whatever else is, uh, uh, going to be, uh, gonna be going there. Okay, cool. Thanks for the conversation on this, council. We not voted? Okay, hang on, guys. We haven't had the vote yet.
No, but we need a vote on the, the referral.
No, there is, there is no deferral. Sorry, guys. Come on in. My fault.
I have moved to defer infinity and seconded by Counsel Carrance.
Yeah, no, uh, Counsel Maguire did not make a motion. And it was a phrase that Counsel Carrance had used on that. There was no formal motion. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks to the, uh, thanks for the great, uh, conversation on that, council. Okay, we are kind of slammed here tonight, uh, so we'll, uh, kind of move forward here, uh, with the draft policy for, uh, complaints. The motion on the floor is the council approved the draft policy, uh, complaints policy as attached to the staff report uh, from the admin assistant and corporate officer dated March 24th. Counsel Maguire moves and Counsel Robert seconds. Okay, discussion. Jasmine, are you gonna take this one?
Sure, I can.
Yep, please.
Um, so the City of Kimberly does not currently have a mechanism for handling formal complaints. Um, this fall, I completed a course, uh, at Capilano University. Yeah. Um, I completed a course at Capilano University on policy development, and with the direction and support of the corporate officer, we decided to look into the complaints gap, uh, at the City of Kimberly. The, uh, attached, uh, draft policy, uh, complaints policy recognizes that most complaints can be resolved in the normal course of business, that some complaints will need to be escalated, and then that some complainants may not be happy with the resolution that's presented to them. And so, uh, creating the, um, the policy and encapsulating some of the procedure within the policy adds a level of transparency so that complainants understand what to expect. Um, it clarifies some elements for staff safety, uh, responsible use of city resources, and then, um, prioritizes customer service, which is important to us as well. Um. It reflects internal and external research. I spoke with a number of my coursemates as well as the instructors. Uh, we looked at quite a few examples from other municipalities to create this draft. And, um, we believe that it provides a pretty fair and clear process for complainants and for staff, uh, in managing expectations.
All right, excellent. Good work on this, Jasmine. Uh, council, go ahead, Counsel McBain, then Counsel Fox.
Yeah, um, thanks, Jasmine. This is, uh, this is really good. And, and I've had to be very nitpicky to try to find some things. Um, and they're mostly directed at these guys, so, um, some good work. Um, uh, a couple of things that, that jumped out. Uh, a couple of things that, that jumped out at me about the um, the complaints and um, the one little note in here that, you know, complaints that, that um, may, may, we may have to seek legal or professional advice um, to, to deal with some of these things. And I guess the, the question would be to Jim, um, kind of based on our experience or maybe, I don't know, trying to put your, put the, your magic hat on and, and try to predict what that would, that kind of impact would be. Um, I'd be curious about that. And then just the second thing was about uh, related to complaints actually about the CAO and the process going through uh, through you, Mr. Mayor and basically making most of the decisions related to the CAO unilateral through the mayor. And I was just, it was more of a question, Dawn, if you're, if you were comfortable with that from a transparency, transparency standpoint. I'm not foreseeing any, any complaints hopefully um, about Jim, but just, just getting your level of comfort, Dawn, around that, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are my two questions. No issues.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, just on the question legal, so you're, you're wondering what the impact from a financial perspective could be?
Just based on, like, I know we don't, we've never had a formal complaint process, so it's hard to have data to tap into. But, you know, is there a feel for, is a significant amount of consultation we would need or?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. You know, certainly if there's something that, that we don't feel we have the, the in-house expertise to uh, make a decision on, we'll, we'll reach out. And um, typically it's, you know, with, with things like that, it's, it's a fairly quick turnaround with legal counsel. They, they'll be able to find some case law and uh, you know, have something that, like that resolved in a, you know, with, with a couple hours legal time. The, the, the big thing with this um, policy is just gaining some consistency in how we, how we deal with folks. You know, it's, now, you know, if something comes through the doors, depending on who's dealing with it, it could be dealt with differently, different levels of the organization. And having a process in place like this, it just, it gives us, something comes through the door, we flip to this policy and we're, we're chucking down the line.
Yeah, further to that, I, I, I completely agree, Jim. I, I support us having a policy. I think it's something that we, we need. It was just a, just getting your thought on that. Thanks.
Councillor Fox.
Actually, my um, comment was similar to um, one of councillor's uh, McBane's comments, which was just in the um, resolution thing in regards to the um, CAO and the, the mayor's decision to be able to um, whatever, I'd remove him. Um, and this, no criticism of you, Mayor McCormick, no criticism of you, Jim. This is more just realizing that this is a policy document that will probably outlive everyone in these roles. I, I think the language has the potential to create a very toxic dynamic between those individuals. And I would feel more comfortable if council was always involved in the decision. I don't know if that's something that can be added in. But it's, there's a really bad potential for awful power dynamic there um, that can make things incredibly toxic. And um, again, this is not you, this is not you. It's more just what happens with um, you know, new people. And maybe they're not nice like all of us are. Um, so just sort of thinking about that more broadly.
Thanks for those comments.
Yeah, it's, it's good feedback. And we do have to keep in mind whenever we're approving a policy like this, it's not, you know, it's not just dealing with the group that's in the room here. It's gonna, you know, we're changing over time. Um, you know, we're putting these in place to deal with these issues ten years down the road, ten years.
Yeah, exactly. We can't be changing policies every time the council, every general election. Further? I've got a couple. So at one point here in the policy, it talks about resolving these complaints expediently. And I see, you know, a city will respond to complaints within ten business days. I see other, somewhere else here, we got twenty business days. That, that really seems like a long time. Not very expedient. Um, kind of where did the ten days or the timing come from on some of this?
So these timelines are specific to the formal complaints form. So as I mentioned, we expect that most complaints can be handled face to face right during the normal course of business. When things need to be escalated past a senior manager and you want to file a formal complaint, then uh, the chief administrative officer is gonna need time to investigate what's been submitted, speak with staff, learn about um, sort of the, the context of the complaint before we can really uh, provide a, a real acknowledgement that speaks to the matter.
All right, thanks Jasmine. Um, how many complaints do we get? What's our, what's our, what's the data tell us over the last, say, year? How many a month? How many a week?
Without a formal complaint mechanism, there's no way to have that data.
I got it. We do track um, you know, things like service requests, complaints about potholes, service levels, that type of thing. We, we do have the, yeah, the light ship um, module on the website. So we do have a formal mechanism for tracking that. But, you know, complaints coming in about uh, those individual members of staff, for example, that isn't something that, that's necessary to track right now. But the, you know, complaints about services, that's something we, we can pull some stats on. Not, don't have a feeling what that is right now.
So we, when the, when the term complaint comes up, the first thing I think of is bylaw. Would that, this be part of uh, would this be part of that? Or does bylaw have its own response mechanism in place?
So uh, bylaw, the complaints related to property resident, that the property bylaw violation, this is part of like the service we offer. But if there was complaints related to the bylaw enforcement officer conduct, that would fall under this policy.
Yeah, no, I was thinking uh, more about the, so the bylaw officer doesn't investigate unless there's a complaint, right? It's complaint driven. So by its very nature, we have complaints coming in. Is that, i- is there its, its own set of standards for response to that? Or is it bylaw gonna come under this as well?
So the set of standard was uh, approved by council through the bylaw enforcement policy. So this is what we're following.
Okay, cool.
But then within that policy, there is nothing that created the mechanism if someone had a complaints against the bylaw enforcement officer.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Thanks, Maurice. So uh, on page five of ten, the matrix there under managers. It says, review and respond to formal complaints as assigned. Um, it doesn't really say anywhere in here who does the assigning. I think it's implied that it's the chief admin officer because the formal complaints come into the CAO. But it doesn't really specify where, you know, who, who does the assignment. Might be worthwhile to.
I believe that we, um, in another section of the policy, it's, it says that the manager of the service area that is responsible for the complaint, that will be the manager that investigates it. I can't find.
Yeah, but who would assign it to that manager? I'll just leave that with you.
Sure.
Yeah, it, it's more a kind of a text thing, you know, as part of what's in here. Hang on, I had one more. Nope, that was it. Sorry. Councillor McGuire.
Yeah, it seems like there was some confusion over, you know, complaints policy. Sounds like all complaints that come to the city, where this is just formal complaints that are getting escalated beyond the normal day-to-day complaints that we receive. So I'm wondering whether it might be beneficial to name this something other than just complaint policy, maybe formal complaint policy, something like that to to make it clear that we don't just follow this. Every single time a member of the public has an issue with the city, this is, this is more of an escalation when someone's dissatisfied with the response to a complaint and wants to escalate it.
Thanks councillor McGuire. Further? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have the draft policy for public uh, conduct. And the motion is that council approve the draft policy uh, as attached to the staff report. Move her please. Councillor Fox, thank you. Councillor McBane, seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so during uh, the writing of the complaints policy, uh, we referred to the guidebook from the office of the audit person. And uh, best practice is to capture um, to capture a process around how public conduct will be handled during the complaints process. While we were doing the internal research, we identified that there wasn't a clear policy about public conduct generally expected from members of the public when engaging with the city. Uh, so we created this as a separate policy, not as a part of the complaints policy. We worked on a public conduct policy that encapsulates public conduct during the formal complaints process. Um, and that addresses conduct that's not acceptable outside of that process, such as harassment of staff. Uh, we have some signage and some um, procedural documents right now that kind of guide that, but nothing that's really public facing that talks about what the expectations are um, of people dealing, in their dealings with the city. Um, the policy acknowledges that restricting people's access to municipal services is very, is a very extreme situation and that that wants to be avoided at all costs. But it clearly outlines the types of behavior that aren't acceptable and why. And um, the city's commitment to a safe and healthy workplace for staff as well as for other service users who are accessing city facilities or city spaces at the same time.
Thanks Jasmine.
Councillor McBane, go ahead. Um, again, thanks Jasmine. And, and I think when I first saw um, when I was reading the, the complaints policy and I saw uh, mention or, or uh, reference to, to public conduct, um, I, my hackles kind of went up initially at first going like this seems a little bit like an overreach when I was reading the complaints policy. As I, as I rolled in and, and read the, the public uh, conduct policy, there was, it gave me a lot more clarity on what this is intended to be. And I just did a really great job of explaining it. And uh, I do think it's actually really, really important. And I do think it doesn't go so far as, you know, obviously infringing on people's rights. We, we want people to participate in what we do and but, you know, as long as it spells out what's, what's okay and what's not, I think it's, I think it's really good. And it's, and the biggest thing too is, is um, safety of our staff. I'm, I'm glad that that was the focus of uh, of the policy because I think that's, that's paramount. And uh, I know, I know none of us around this table want to see our staff been put in, in uh, at risk at all, so. That was a long way of saying, thanks Jasmine. Great job.
Thanks councillor McBane. Councillor Roberts, go ahead.
Well, thank you Jasmine. Um, I, I feel like these, both of these policies are very Canadian. They're, they're all worded with, with uh, integrity and um, uh, an intention to get the best result. And I think that, that we could all do more of that. And I really like the way you've written it out.
Councillor Fox, go ahead.
I just, I, it's lovely. I have no questions for you about it. I have a question for Jim. Um, cause in, or maybe whoever decides these things policy-wise, but um, cause there's a comment in here that the desk technique um, is used for staff to communicate clearly with the public um, to manage unacceptable pub, blah, 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 blah. But I read this a couple of times. Is there no de-escalation training for staff?
That's, that's a great point. And something that came up while we were overseeing this?
Yeah, cause it's the thing, I worked in this, I, I've done lots of jobs, but I worked at disability service for long enough to know that you can make a situation real bad without realizing it and without intending to, because that other person is gonna see something a certain way. I think that having a technique to explain things is excellent, but I would really, really, really like to see all staff that come in contact with certain levels of the public to have de-escalation training as part of their um, training.
Yeah, hundred percent agree with that. I've, we've got some frontline staff that are, are really good at that, but it, it's not, it's, that's just because that's the way they're, they're wired and not necessarily through training, but that, that is really important. Totally agree with that.
Thank you for that. So I, I do have one question, and that is around determining what constitutes unacceptable public behavior, uh, page six of fourteen. So it says, staff must report through documented words and or actions of the person. So this could be emails, letters, uh, posts on social media, et cetera, that the conduct of the member of the public is within the bounds of what the city has deemed as unacceptable. So is that toward that staff member? Or is it an observation of that staff member against somebody else on staff? I'm thinking the social media posts, for example, those things are all over the place. And I have targets that um, you know, are not necessarily the person that's viewing the unacceptable behavior.
So it's the observation of staff with regards to that, like that, that service user or taxpayer or?
Right, but the unacceptable behavior doesn't have to be toward that staff member. It could, that staff member observing that behavior towards somebody else. Another staffer. You, you, is that clear?
It's not, it's not in relation to um, a staff, like staff, if, if it's like, if I notice something that is being done by another staff member.
Oh, no.
And towards me.
Member of the public.
That.
I get that. So here's, here's the example. Here's the example. Uh, I observe uh, on a social media post, somebody, pardon me, saying something uh, unacceptable that falls within the unacceptable bounds. Uh, somebody saying something about you. Do I report that? Or is it somebody on social media that's saying something about me, which I then would report? It's unclear in the wording here.
That, I think it could, it could be both. It could definitely, we've had instances of the manager of um, community development and communication uh, doing screenshots of comments on social media that are attacking city staff.
Right.
So, like, I think that's, in general, we won't be looking at social media. We know it's quite volatile sometimes, so it's not gonna be our first approach. But if there's someone that has been uh, rude to staff, harassing staff, and on top of that, they're attacking staff personally or to their title on social media, this is, this is gonna be an element that's gonna be used as evidence.
I, I brought up social media because that is so difficult, you know, to, to pin down as you, as you indicated, Maurice. But typically, if somebody is behaving badly, there's probably multiple channels of bad behavior.
Exactly. Yeah. And most cases, in order for um, the process of deeming someone uh, was a unreasonable conduct, there's gonna be different, like, that person is gonna come at us in different ways.
Okay, awesome.
Under the policy.
Thanks for that clarification. Further, council? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, excellent. We're staff. Uh, plugging some uh, significant holes in the policy there. Okay, next up, we have the public uh, notification and evacuation route planning grant application uh, through the, through the fire department. The motion on the floor is that council direct staff to apply to UBCM uh, to the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund um, for uh, forty thousand dollars to fund one hundred percent of the estimated cost of updating the current area-specific evacuation route plan. Two motions. We'll stop with that right now. Motion please, councillor McGuire. Thank you. Uh, second councillor uh, McBane. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a little bit of background. The purpose of this report uh, is to request council to approve the uh, SEP funding um, Community Emergency Bearness Fund for a grant of a hundred percent of uh, cost of updating the current uh, area-specific evacuation route planning. So that route planning was completed in twenty twenty one uh, and taken on by the regional district. We're looking to bring this back in-house and build on top of what the uh, regional district brought back to us as a, as a partner in the program. And staff are looking to answer questions about timelines of evacuation, uh, infrastructure capacity, and other best practices related to uh, recent emergencies events as they're always evolving.
All right, excellent. Thanks, chief. Council, questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Second motion on this one is that if UBCM approves the grant application that the uh, chief finance, financial officer be directed to include the expenditure of forty thousand in the twenty-five to twenty-nine five-year financial bylaw as a non-capital project with the identified funding of the source being the grant revenue uh, from the uh, application. Councillor McBane moves and councillor Robert seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thanks, chief. Next up, we have the Canada, Canada. Next up, we have the Canada Housing Infrastructure Grant Application. The motion is that council direct staff to develop and submit a grant application uh, to the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund for nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars to fund fifty percent of the one point nine eight million dollar cost to construct the Lowest Creek Pressure-Reducing Valve Station project as further detailed in the staff report. Who were placed? Councilor McBain moves and uh, Councilor Fox seconds. All right, um, which of you esteemed gentleman is going to take this one?
Thank you, Mayor. I must admit, I didn't really prepare for this one, but um.
That's all right. I'm sure you know what it's all about.
Yeah, well, basically, we're asking for approval to apply for a grant through the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund uh, covering half of the projected one million nine hundred and eighty dollar construction cost of the Lowest Creek P R V building. Um, eh, yeah, it's a federal grant. I think that our s- staff think that uh, this project is a great candidate for that funding. So we decided to bring it to council tonight to apply for it.
So to be clear, uh, this is in, this is in the budget for, and fu- fully funded in the budget. And this grant opportunity has come up for which we're now applying in the hopes of getting fifty percent back. Is that correct?
Okay, that's correct.
Councilor McGuire, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could just provide a bit of context where it is, who it serves. The, the Lost Creek P R V, because this is an existing P R V, is that right? Yes, thanks, Counselor McGuire. It's, it's an existing P R V. It's up in Townsite, uh, Cranbrook Street and Second Ave. It um, it is functionally the, the mainframe for most of Kimberly's water supply. It regulates water supply and pressures to most of Kimberly most of the year. And it's an existing building that's outdated and there are a number of issues with it, um, both mechanically and uh, spatially inside.
Yeah, sorry, I can add to that. So the only zone that it doesn't cover is the ski hill zone. So the rest of town flows through this P R V station. So it's really the, the heart of the, the system.
Go ahead, Councilor McBain.
Yeah, I grew up just up the street from this one. Um, and just my question is um, uh, service life of these P R V stations, just in general, what, what are we finding? I mean, maybe a better question would be the new ones that we put in more recently. Um, what would be the service life in the last?
Don't have that offhand. My anticipation would be twenty-five years would be kind of my is, is around where the equipment would start to be needing to replace. The building itself is going to last longer than that, but the, the P R Vs themselves, so it's based around twenty-five years.
Further? Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Second piece of this is that if the application is successful, staff be directed to amend the twenty-five to twenty-nine five-year financial plan. Uh, once adopted, identifying the funding source as the uh, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar uh, grant revenue. Councilor McGuire, thank you. Counselor McDane seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the Kimberly Public Library Budget Increase Request. As we saw at our last council meeting or the request in the del- from the delegation. The motion is that council approve the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Kimberly Public Library, submitted on March the tenth with an amendment to reduce the city's twenty-twenty-five contribution from the requested amount of two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to one hundred and ninety-five thousand eighty-three dollars to align with the current budget included in year two of the twenty-four to twenty-eight financial plan bylaw. Can you, before we get a motion on the floor, could you comment on this?
Uh, yep, I can run through.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, so yeah, just a correction off the start here. I know that the library director and the treasurer attended on March tenth. It was actually the library director and the president of the board that attended as a delegation. So thank you to Counselor Fox for pointing that out. Yeah, so the, the city um, adopted a, a bylaw in two thousand and one called the, the Kimberly Public Library Establishment Bylaw. So, and with the adoption of that bylaw, our library was established as a municipal library, which falls under the, the Library Act. Um, the, the act stipulates with regard to the library's budget financing that honor before March first each year. The board must prepare and submit to municipal council its annual budget for providing library services. And municipal council is obligated to uh, approve with or without amendment the budget as submitted. So this year, the um, uh, budget was submitted a, a bit late. Um, we had, I had some, some discussion with the library director and they just needed some more time to get some numbers put together. There's been some, some changes uh, at the library in recent years, so they're, they're going through a bit of rebuilding there. So they, they attended on March tenth as delegation and part of the budget that they presented, including it, included an increase of five percent to the uh, the contribution received from the city. So in two thousand twenty-four, the contribution was a hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, so that five percent increase uh, amounted to nine thousand six hundred and ten dollars for a requested contribution of two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So the, kind of the kicker with regards to the timing on this is the week prior on March third, the Chief Financial Officer um, held a special budget meeting to present operating budget changes to council. Um, at that meeting, council passed resolutions to establish the increase to the municipal tax rate for the year and provide a direction for staff to go ahead and prepare the financial plan bylaw to be brought back to council on April fourteenth uh, for consideration of first three readings. Um, so that the library's request came in a, a week after that. Um, the current five-year financial plan, which is twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight, includes in it a one and a half percent uh, for each year to that library contribution. And that um, falls in line, it's consistent with the uh, the increases for the, the long-term grants, I guess is the kind of the closest comparison there. So there's one and a half percent increases built into that as well. So the um, the five percent that uh, the library was requesting is three and a half percent more than what's in the current budget. Um, more than what council had approved at the March third meeting. So it's a difference of six thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, the difference between the five percent and the three and a half percent, which is, you know, it's a relatively minor amount, uh, would require a zero point zero five percent property tax collection increase to fund. Um, which would result in an increase to the, the property tax paid by the average single-family home of a buck forty-three. So it's, it is a minor amount. Um, increasing the tax rate adjustment that was approved by council at the March third meeting by that zero point zero five percent would bring the, the six point nine nine percent aggregate increase uh, that was discussed or approved at the March third meeting to seven point zero four percent. So the options here, um, the recommendation is that uh, council approve um, the budget with the, uh, an amendment to adjust the increase to cities, the city's contribution from five percent to one and a half percent, which aligns with what's currently budgeted for in year two of the five-year financial plan bylaw. Um, I've got some response options noted. Um, that being that um, the, the, the first response is that uh, council authorize a, a increase to the property tax collection to raise that additional six thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars um, and approve the budget as submitted. The full five percent increase. And the section option, second option, rather than increasing our revenues uh, through property taxes to fund that additional amount, is to de- decrease our expenditures. So to, to get direction from council, to decrease expenditures elsewhere in the five-year financial plan to essentially fund that, that full five percent increase. So it's, it's a convoluted discussion here. It, it was really complicated by the fact, it's just, it's really a, a timing thing. Um, uh, if the request would have come through a, a week, a couple of weeks earlier, it would have been considered along with all the other operating budget changes. But um, if we want to provide it now, we just need to, to make some changes to previous council direction.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why I asked you to speak to this first before we put the motion on the floor. So the option here is to um, is to uh, not approve the five percent, but to adjust the budget for the um, for the one and a half percent increase. Or uh, really, option, uh, option, response, option one is really, you know, really the only viable, and that is to take the extra increase to get that sixty-seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars back. Uh, Counselor Fox, then Counselor McBain.
Sorry, I just have a bit of a question, because I, Jim, we've talked about this a little bit before. It's the way we talk about things, right? And the way we talk about taxes and how things get framed and stuff. And then there's this big bold lettering saying, this resolution would need to be specific on which res- which expenditure item to release. And that's a little between us, you know, maybe a little aggressive, but whatever. Um, but like, sort of speaking more like broadly about it, the next, spoiler alert, if you don't have the agenda in front of you. The next item on the agenda is also something that's asking for money, but we're just pulling that out of reserves. Like, there's no bold print in that one, so this is such a inconsequential amount of money. Why can't we just pull it out of reserves?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just respond to that. And sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to scream that at council with the, with the bull there. It was really intended just so that that resolution didn't get moved without naming something specific, because it doesn't mean anything without that. And I would suggest that if council wants to go with that option to, that being a re- a reduction to another expenditure, that it be a reduction to the contribution to um, the general operator, general capital reserve, which is where, you know, a, a big chunk of the new revenue through property taxes is going this year. We made that a decision to put a bunch of money there. So the um, but as a general rule, I mean, funding ongoing operating expenses from reserves is uh, it, it's not, it's not something that's sustainable over the long term.
Good. Go ahead.
Well, I don't think we should actually plan on doing it long term, but I'm saying like this came in sort of late and that's like things happen. We under, we understand that, right? Sometimes we don't have the answers to questions of the reports we're expecting when we're expecting them. So it's more this thing of since it's late and since it's such an inconsequential amount of money in the grand scheme of the city's budget, does that not seem more logical than some ominous sounding tax increase for people? Right? To keep the library maybe able to offer a slightly higher level of service than the exceptional level of service they already offer.
Yep. So, so uh, further to that, to that question though, if we did that, um, the fund for a year out of reserves, we'd still have to address that uh, that increase next year. So what it would do is simply buy one year, uh, because for the operating increase is ongoing forever, it's not just for a year. Go ahead.
I'm aware of that, but can that not be a problem that can be looked at when the budget gets looked at? And there's places where we can, also, it sounds like maybe there's going to be, what, like half a million dollars coming in to the bank from that grant? So it sounds like we might have extra revenue to play around with. And if it's seven thousand dollars this year, what is that next year? Ten thousand?
So, so.
I under, no, I, like, I get it, but it's just, we're.
Yeah, no, fair enough. But to be clear, grants that come in have contribution agreements that don't allow you to shift money around. It can only be used for the purpose that the grant goes in.
I'm not talking about the grant, though. I'm talking about the money the city had earmarked to pay for it, that now all of a sudden might be offset by a grant. Is there not, if that grant comes through, a half a million extra dollars that we're working with?
I'll just, go ahead, jump here to try to close the loop on this. So I, I, I wouldn't recommend saying, we'll take that sixty-seven twenty-seven out of reserves. But if, if council wants to go with that option to um, and reduce the, this year's um, level of contribution to the general capital reserve by that sixty-seven twenty-seven, then it, it does, it reduces it, you know, for the full five years and beyond. So there, there's no having to mess around with that stuff in the future. It's essentially the same, same impact, but it's a kind of a long-term thing. So that, that's certainly, that, that's kind of the intention in number two there. That's where council wants to go.
Counselor Roberts, go ahead. Or sorry, Counselor McBain, then Counselor Roberts.
Yeah, um, that was going to be my recommendation, Jim, was the, to, to uh, use that one, that extra one point five. Um, but I do, I, I do, I think it, it is a, it is a continuous thing. I mean, that we do have to um, that we do have to um, uh, take into account. I mean, it's, there's, the, the library came yet, you know, and, and basically saying, yeah, we, you know, we're, we're falling behind. So I do think it's, it's, um, it is an ongoing thing. I don't think this is a one-time thing. And, and it, it, it makes, it makes a lot more sense to me. I was just, you know, looking at this. I understand even the symbolic nature of going from six point nine nine to seven point zero four, even though it's very small. It's a pain in the butt and it's, there is some symbology there. Um, so I think that that's the way to go. And, and the thing about the grant too is we don't know that we're gonna, we don't know that we're gonna get that, that grant back. Like, we don't know that that's gonna, so we can't really bank on that. So to me, I'm glad that you brought that up, Jim, because my suggestion was going to be just to, to take that inconsequential amount out of that contribution to the infrastructure fund.
Go ahead, Joe.
I could, I, I did meet with the library director. Um, Tegan's got some, some great ideas, some really good plans for the library going forward. And um, you know, we, we talked about uh, making an introduction to, to Kristin and engaging in some discussion earlier on, like in the, in the fall, uh, to start talk, to talk about some longer-term plans that she has for the library. So rather than, you know, us, us dealing at it just kind of as a, you know, at, at a single meeting, that there kind of be some you know, discussion uh, at a staff level and bringing that to council, so that there's a, a bit more forward-thinking for planning with this stuff. Some really good things going on over there.
Yeah, we've, we've, yeah, go ahead. Um, and just the one thing I guess that we didn't talk about too is we, there, there, there could be a the non-market change, also, when those numbers finally come in too, those could be more preferential than we had expected as well, right? That was the other point. I sat here for a long time ago. But uh, yeah, that was just one more thing that I wanted. I don't, I don't want to bank on that, but it is, it could be going our favor too, at least to exceed that amount that we're asking for.
Counselor Roberts?
So Jim.
Last word to Counselor Karen.
So Jim, moving, moving up in an, in an acceptable fashion with the five percent, does that still uh, leave us at one and a half percent next year? Unless otherwise discussed?
Yeah, so that's, that's where we get into the longer-term discussion.
It's still, it's.
Right now, it's one and a half escalation factor that's built into that library contribution. So if, if through discussions with the, with the library i- in the fall, they want to come up with a plan that, you know, they they, they don't see one and a half percent being sustainable for them, they come forward with some um, discussion, some uh, suggestions, requests from council to, to increase that. That's something that council consider as part of, could consider as part of next year's budget deliberations.
Counselor Karen, go ahead.
Great, I, I'm really um, glad to hear this conversation. And I'm really glad to hear the comment about um, more collaboration for the long term, so that it's not, not kind of that one-off. And uh, and just, you know, the, the library is so important to our communities. So, you know, the term inconsequential amount has been mentioned a couple of times, but I'd just like to reframe that completely to say it's not inconsequential to the library. And, and to our whole community really um, benefits. Uh, the library is so important, especially as uh, people who are struggling with affordability um, get access to internet and basic services, kids go there after school. It's such an important public space. And um, and it's also, you know, acting as a clean air cooling, warming during extreme weather. Um, for people who have nowhere else to go for that. So I'd see it really as a core and essential service. And, and that that's a really critical piece. And, and I look forward to kind of that, you know, longer-term view to how we work together. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Um, it seems this year more than others, maybe it's just because it is this year. But we, we had so many late presentations and conversations from, on, on, on budgeting. And we've had to make so many adjustments. There must be some kind of a date that we can set in October or perhaps November, that um, all of these um, all of these associated not-for-profits that are bringing the budgets here and are looking for money in one way, shape or form. We need to get that in October and November and not be dealing with it in January and February or March. Um, there has, anyways, it's just a comment that there has to be some notification or something that we can easily put in place to get them up at the table. This has been a, a more wishier than others for that, I think. It certainly feels like it anyway. Um, I want to be cognizant of the staff work that has to go into every one of these changes. It's not inconsequential to use, to use that term, I guess. Okay, uh, call the question. Uh, well, there is no question. Uh, we need a. Well, there is no question, we need a motion. Councillor McPain, go ahead.
So I would move a second.
You're talking about response option two, as noted in the report, okay. Nope.
Yeah, just, just for the, the notes, if I could, Mr.-
Go ahead.
I'd suggest that at the end of that option two there, increase the 2025 library contribution from the city be funded through a reduction to the transfer to the general capital reserve previously approved by council at a May third, or March third special budget meeting.
Just to kind of capture that. Okay. Seconder, councillor Cairns, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Item number four is the Rotary Park playground upgrades, specifically the, the rubber resurfacing. Thank you, councillor Roberts. So on, on recusal, we should notify what that is, and councillor Roberts is recusing because she's the project manager for, for this particular project. The motion on the floor is that council approve the allocation of up to two hundred and five thousand dollars from the general capital reserve to fund the installation of rubber surfacing and other associated work as part of the Rotary Park Upgrade Project in 2025. And further, that the three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar budget previously approved for the Rotary Park Upgrade be amended to four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars, with the identified funding sources being two hundred and five thousand from the city reserves, a twenty thousand dollar in-kind contribution of the city, and two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars from approved grants. Councillor McPain moves. I have a seconder, councillor Cairns, thank you. Discussion. Got a question off the bat? Go ahead. Hey, go ahead.
I, I, I'm struggling with that amount. I think that's, with everything that we have going, we have a lot of uncertainty, we've got a massive infrastructure project coming down the pipe. I, I love, I love the fact that we're upgrading the playground equipment, and that seems to be covered for the most part, but for the life of me, and maybe this is my bias of growing up with much worse player playground equipment and harder surfaces to fall on, but, yeah, yeah. But I mean, to me, the, just to be able to reuse the, the existing pea gravel there, to me, you're, it's, to me, that's a, a decent compromise in making sure that there's safe equipment for the, the kids to, to play on and enjoy, but at the same time, there's a surface there that's not a concrete service, surface, and, and it's worked, as far as I know, well, over these past couple of years since the, since the previous, where the current equipment has been in there. So I have a really, really hard time supporting two hundred thousand dollars for some surfacing.
Thank you. Councillor Maguire?
Yeah, I had similar thought. I was also just curious if anybody knows what the service life on the rubber surface is for the playground? I'd be just curious to know, because it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and if we're gonna have to replace it in 10 years, I'd like to know.
I know. I don't. Can find out. Thanks for the question. Thanks for the question. Councillor Fox, go ahead.
Question about on the, so they, what is this, page three? Where it says, given the denial of the grant applications, the club requested the city consider funding the cost from reserves. So can nonprofits and clubs just like come in and ask and say, I want you to give me money for this project from this budget? Can they do that? Like, I don't, I'm not asking that to be a jerk, it just like that to me is like jumped out at me, that that seems very something. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I could see that. The, the reason, I guess in this instance, this is a, it's a city asset, it's a city park, and the Rotary Club, you know, they, they raised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to put into a city asset, which I, I think is, is commendable. But yeah, the reason for the, the suggestion or the ask for the, the funding from reserves is that it's, at the end of the day, it's a city asset, city-owned, city-maintained. It's not something that's being built or purchased for the use of the, the society, it's, it's for the community.
Can I just further on?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So then theoretically, any group in a city-owned building could come in and be like, hi, I heard you got money in the reserve, right? Like, am I right on this, that theoretically anyone in a, in a city-owned asset could, I don't want to say pull this, because that's not the right language, but could have a similar ask?
Yeah, I guess the difference here is this was a Rotary Club initiated project that the agreements, the operating agreements that we have with other societies who are, are tenants essentially in city buildings is that it's the city's responsibility, capital repairs and upgrades. So, you know, if, if that society wanted to take it upon themselves to search out some grant funding, that'd be awesome, but at the end of the day, it's written into those agreements that the city will be undertaking the, undertaking the upgrades when they're acquired.
Councillor McPain?
Just to answer councillor Maguire's question, I looked it up, 10 to 15 years is a service life, and pea gravel, I think, is much longer.
Councillor Dunaback, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm curious, so are they gonna remove the park that's there, put this new surface down, and then put a new park as well on top of that? Because the, the playground itself is like way past end of life, I've experienced this firsthand with my children. Me and you have lived through worst, definitely, for sure. But I just see like, this is looking like it's as big a project as the chunk park we just had built. So I, like, I personally paved my parking lot, and it cost me 25 not to put me into it, but I just, I'm wondering, like, is this gonna include all-new everything, or is it just the rubber?
It's all-new everything, yeah. That, that, that was the driving force behind the project, is the replacement of the playground equipment. So that, the two hundred and fifty thousand and change that's been raised, that's been committed to replacing the, the playground equipment. And then the, the additional ask for the two hundred and five thousand was specific to the, the rubber surfacing. So the playground's getting replaced with existing funds that have been raised, so that, that's essentially a done deal, the equipment's on order.
So did that, that go out to contract, or to bid for contractors, or we just, they just, the Rotary picks the contractor that's gonna do it?
Yeah, they, they got, they got some quotes, they, the Rotary, Rotary Club went out and got grant funding, they got a hundred and fifty grand from CBT, fifty from the RDK, and then about fifty thousand dollars of their own money. So it's, it's not taxpayer dollars that we're spending here, but the Rotary projects are a little unique in themselves. I mean, if you look at the, the Marysville Falls Walkway, that was a project that was taken on by the, the Rotary Club, and it was really kind of hands-off on the city's part. They, they went out, raised the funds, did the work, similar to the Splash Park, I think, but this one's a little bit more of a, I guess, a hybrid model.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with the project. I, I do think that the city should have a little bit of hands-on too, so that we don't build something that maybe doesn't have the proper drainage.
Councillor Cairns, then councillor Maguire.
So the, you know, looking at that cost, and then, you know, the, the point that councillor McPain and Maguire need to round the cost and the short lifespan, you know, it's all, makes it seem extremely expensive, especially when we have the projects that we need to do in front of us. And I'm just, you know, in terms of the rubber surface, the benefit of that is that it does create a surface that people with mobility issues can move around on. So that's, I think that that's really the main purpose there, that's why it's being looked at. So it would make the playground accessible for those in, in wheelchairs or that type of thing.
And it's a safety, a safety-
Safety as well.
As well.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it is, was something actually at the, I was at the accessibility plan open house, and it was something that, when I was chatting with someone, they were mentioning there too, just around, actually, older people wanting to get in there with their grandchildren who were in walkers and, and wheelchair. So that's, that is what the consideration is there, but it, it does, it is a very high price tag, for sure.
Councillor Maguire, and then we'll call the question.
So I just wanted to speak to how awesome it is that the Rotary Club's doing this, and how appreciative I am as a community member, as a, and as a city councillor, for all the effort they put in. You know, that's not, you know, it's not gone without notice. I just struggle, again, with the cost and the low lifespan on this thing. And I guess my question is, you know, if we're looking at two hundred and twenty-five thousand over 10 years, that's twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars a year plus inflation. And also, you know, this is a massive capital cost too, you could look at it that way too. I just want to make sure if we're spending accessible dollars on accessibility and safety, that we're doing it where it counts. We have an accessibility committee, and, you know, we have, we have them, maybe, maybe a suggestion could be to send this to the accessibility committee for comment. I don't know if that's an option. But yeah, that's more my concern, it's not, it's not so much that I, I do want to see projects move forward that increase the accessibility in our community, but I also recognize that there's a limited amount of money, and that if we're gonna be spending money on accessibility here, it could mean that we're not spending it somewhere else. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thanks, councillor Maguire. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so just based on the discussion here, I mean, there is a, a response option provided that we install a new playground equipment, continue to, to research, seek out grant funding to get the rubber surfacing done at a later point. The two things don't have to happen at the same time. Rotary Club had indicated that they, they will continue to look for grant funding, I, I did have a discussion with our manager of community development and communications, our, our grant guru as well, and she's not familiar with anything that's out there right now, but I mean, that's not saying that it's something will come down the road in the future as well, so that, that option's there as well, if council wants to go in that direction.
Okay, I think we've kind of exhausted the conversation on this one. As Jim said, and is implied in the report here, the wording was up to two hundred and five thousand to take into account additional grant options that may have an opportunity to come here over the next while. The ones that were rejected, I think there were two or three applications, grant applications rejected, there is an opportunity to reapply again, so we'll, we'll have to see how all of this shakes out. Okay, I'm gonna call the question now. Although, and so the response option on the table right now is that council approve the allocation of up to the two hundred and five thousand. I'm gonna call the question on that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Right, that motion is defeated. Do we, yeah, yeah, that's unanimous. Do we want to direct staff to search out other grant opportunities? Can I have a mover for that? Councillor McPain moves, and councillor Dunaback seconds, all those in favor? That motion is carried. All right. Somebody let Sandra back in. Okay, next up, we have correspondence, and if I could, if I could have a mover to receive. Councillor Fox, thank you. Councillor McPain seconds. All right. Go ahead, councillor McPain.
Yeah, I, commenting on, on both of the, the correspondence items, because they're kind of related, so thank you to Andrea and Merci, Marie Pierre, Saint Bonide. I think, given, given the, the broader political climate right now, and, and given the spirit of, of unity, I think these are both great ideas. I think that, I think the Francophone school flag, I think it's, it almost looks like it's passed the, the time, but it's, I think it's something that we could consider maybe for next year, but with, with respect to the indigenous flags in the arena, I mean, to me, this is a no-brainer. Canada's at a point right now where, you know, we are looking at every possible way that we can remain united, whether it's with our indigenous partners, whether it's provincially between, you know, British Columbia, Alberta, Quebec, the whole broad spectrum, the more that we can show that unity, and if it's through, use the flags, I, I'm in full support of those types of ideas.
Thanks, councillor McPain. So these are two quite different things. The, the Frank, the Francophone flag, that's a proclamation, it's kind of a 30-day period. And I know, and Jasmine helped me out here, but I think they were notified that the policy are, you know, that we have for proclamations is fairly clear. And what they have done is basically said, we don't agree with that, we want you to reconsider it, which, you know, is kind of a, is, is probably not a, a, you know, a path that we want to go down, otherwise, what's the point of having the policy? On the other hand, the, the indigenous flag thing is, that, that's quite different. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I should have added with, with the Francophone thing too, I, I do, I do think we need to have, I, I do think we need to stay on that policy, it was just a general comment that I, that I provided, like, I, I, I like the idea of it, and I, and I do want to support the, the Francophone school. But yeah, to, to your point, we do have, we do have a policy when it comes to the city hall, so I, I recognize that and I respect that. My comment was more just around general unity and, and trying to find opportunities-
Yeah, thank you for that. So under the action item on that, then, can we refer this to staff to come back with a recommendation? You cool with that?
Yeah, and I think I'm reluctant for, for council to provide direction for staff to draft another policy, but a lot of municipalities are more and more all the time are developing flag policies, just to do with flag protocol in general. And there, there is some protocol that's provided by the different levels of government with regards to, you know, half-mass, that kind of thing of Canadian flag, but a lot of municipalities these days, the larger ones anyways, are having flag policies put into place to deal with exactly these types of issues. So I think that's something that we can keep in mind and bring forward at a later point.
All right, awesome. Do you need a motion on that?
Or with just the policy at this point?
Yeah, okay. Call the question on receipt then, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, could I have a mover to go in camera? Councillor McPain, thank you. Councillor Dunaback seconds, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thanks.
Good work.
Two minutes.